Team Board of Education meeting. So we first order of business is to approve an agenda, have a motion.
I move we approve the agenda.
Thanks, Chris. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Shannon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Next is recognition of audience members, and I know we have at least, oh, there we go. Yep, we have several here. So the first is Ann Ma.
Can we clap?
And just to reiterate, so we have, yeah, so you can go right over there and address us. And there's, everybody has three minutes. And Janice over here will be keeping time for us.
Cool. Thank you. Thank you so much. My name's Ann Ma. And the reason I'm here tonight is because I'm running for the State Board of Education. And I'm trying in, while I'm running, to bring attention to this race. Because so many times, the public does not get invested in this particular race. And when we don't pay attention to who's on the State Board of Education, we've been known to pay a big price for that. So I've been visiting a lot of school boards around this district. It's a tenth of the state, quarter million people. So there are thirty-plus school districts in this district. And I'm trying to get to as many as possible. I was thrilled to get to go to your foundation breakfast because it really showed that this board and this community have a commitment to improving the opportunities for kids, even in the face of what's been going on in Topeka. So I know I don't want to talk politics tonight because it's not appropriate, but I did bring you some information about me and why I'm running, the usual political stuff you can take home and read. The other thing I brought for you is the Legislative Highlights. If you don't have a copy of that, it's kind of the Cliff Notes version of the key bills that were passed this year. And as you know, there were a number of them that impact education, not just finance, but policy as well. So I thought you might find that helpful. It's just something to kind of let you know what the big pieces of legislation were. Anyway, I hope that you will encourage the staff and your neighbors and everyone to get involved in this race, find out who's running and who has the best interest of kids, and work for that. Thank you so much.
Natasha Niel. And I should also, I forgot to mention earlier that typically we don't have, well, not typically always, we don't have back and forth with board members and audience members. So you have your three minutes to discuss and to present what you want. And then you're free to talk to us though afterwards or contact any other time after that.
My name's Natasha Niel. How you guys doing today? All right. So the first thing we are wanting from you guys is the demographics of the IEP. We asking that you guys try to get more staff in the special ed rooms. I'm very familiar with it because my son's been on IEP since preschool, before he even entered elementary. We asking for more representation of the student body, whatever you guys need to do to get more different backgrounds, ethnic backgrounds, races in the school board. Maybe you need to see what Boys and Girls Club doing to get their staff. Another topic I want to discuss today is with everything going on, there's so much focus on adults with the race war that the government's creating. And sometimes we forget about the kids because we're so busy arguing back and forth. We're so busy fighting because that's what I do every day for not only my kids, but a lot of kids. I think that what we need to do here is find a way so these kids can have a space, regardless of what race they are, because it's not just affecting black children, it's affecting children of all races, to find a space for these children so they can vent and have somebody to talk to. I spoke to my daughter on the way over here and I said, what have your school said? She goes to Lawrence High about what's going on. And she said nothing. I said, do they have counselors that has reached out to you guys? No. That's very important, and that needs to be done. I'm done.
Next, we have Christina Linville.
Hi there. So I was looking through the board goals prior to the meeting today. And I saw that specifically within the board goals, you guys are trying to increase support within the schools for LGBTQ students. You're also going to look at the training that you guys do, diversity training within the schools. And I think that's great. But one of the things that I'm not seeing is working on the diversity of the faculty within the schools. I know that we do have some schools that are very white. And I think that that becomes a problem when kids, kids of color don't see people like them in positions of power on the faculty and staff. But as a mother of a white student, well, future student, he's not old enough yet. But we chose a, we chose the Pinkney neighborhood as a place to live because of the diversity of the neighborhood. We have people from all different races, all different socioeconomic backgrounds. Our neighbor is a paraplegic. We live right across from Bert Nash. We see people of all different narratives going through our neighborhood all the time. And I want to make sure that, not just for my son, but for all the kids in Lawrence, when they go to school, those, that same diversity and narratives is represented in the people who are caring for them and nurturing them and teaching them. So that when they're adults and they step up to the polls or they make policy decisions in their workplaces or what have you, they understand that their own narratives are not the only ones that are deserving of their respect and compassion. So I would really like to see as a future goal, just increasing the diversity of our faculty and staff at our schools to include all of those different narratives. So, thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Dasha McCabe Mahir, or Mayor. Sorry if I mispronounced your name.
All right. For what it's worth, Dasha McCabe Mahir. And for someone that has such a big mouth, this is not my favorite thing in the world to do. I just want to touch on two things real quick. I know everybody wants to get out of, get stuff done and get out of here. My concern, I am a product of this school system. Don't look at my transcripts because I've come a long way, baby. And I have three boys in the school system, one at Cordley, one at Central, and, or Liberty, yada, yada, and one at LHS. And I worked last year for a year as a paraprofessional for, in the autism room. And my concern, both as a parent and someone who has tried to understand how the system works or get information or find the right person to contact. And this is not just me. I've heard this from other folks as well. That it's really hard to find out if you have a question, who the heck you would even go to to ask that question. Who's going to have that information? Can I even get to somebody who could tell me, oh, no, that's not me, this person, they can help you out? And that just didn't really make sense to me. So when you go there and there's a drop-down menu, you can look it up by school or you can look it up by, you know, first letter of last name or something. I don't know. It's very tough. It's very tough to get a big picture of what's going on outside of what you can get for staffing at the individual school websites. And that's really frustrating for me, you know. I, you know, graduated high school and college. And, you know, I graduated from the School of Social Welfare at KU. And so, you know, I've kind of learned to navigate some tough systems here. And I just don't understand the reasoning of that. I know it's a lot of work to create that. And I don't really want to have to dig through archives or talk to seven hundred different people to find that information. And especially, I think, when we do want to encourage involvement of the parents and the public in our schools to make them the best we can, I don't think that's a lot to ask. And I'm not just talking about top-down superintendent assistants and whatever. There's job coaches, there's mentors, there's teachers on special assignment. I have no idea what that means, okay? And you shouldn't have to call the general person that answers the phone and talk to three different people before you can find out what you need to know. Another thing I would, the second thing I'd like to touch on is I would like to know where we're at. It's listed as future agenda item for the Classified Staff Compensation Study. I was told it was to be, well, told a lot of things, didn't shake out how we were told it was going to. And they were, the goal was to present it to the board no later than May. It's September, folks. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kel Catterton.
So my name is Kel Catterton, and I have taught many of your students. I am maybe currently teaching some of your students. I think I've taught with many of the people here. I am here standing as a teacher on behalf of my students. You guys have seen me come up here before on behalf of award-winning Future City programs that are integrated beyond just being gifted kids. You've seen me stand up here and advocate for one-to-one for our students in middle school and for blended teaching. So that way, my students of color can succeed at the same rate as my white students. I'm here advocating on behalf of what each one of these women who have come up here to say. And that is because I have students in my school who are crying out for support, like what Tasha said. They are students of color who do not know where to go when things happen in the news that are painful and that are historically traumatic. And they see that in their Tumblr and they see that in their Snapchat. And they try to talk about it and people are like, but I can't talk about that. I don't know what to say. And they are pushed aside and they just learn to squish it down into a little box. Those kids need a place to go. We, as a school board and as a district, need to create some kind of a safe space in each of the schools that is a place where they can go and discuss these traumatic things in a place that is comfortable and comforting and acknowledges that their journey with this history that is being formed today is unique and should not be washed away and wiped away. I also come because Tasha mentioned something else that I think is really important. And from a teacher's standpoint, I think that we need to talk about, which is our IEP and the way that our IEPs are conducted and handed out. And I think that it's super important that we create a task force that looks into how many students of color are on our behavior IEPs as opposed to our students that are white. And I think that we need to also look into how many of our students of color are being represented in our gifted program as well. I know that there is a student at Central Middle School who's doing that work for you. That's what he's doing. I know that the women and the men that are here from the Sisters Without Purpose, that that group has been advocating and tirelessly working for students within this community. I think that we need to, as a district, reach out to our communities of color, but also our activist organizations of color and bring those in. That's part of our DLP training, that's part of our, that's part of our PEG protocol. I don't think we've done enough on that. And so, time has expired, but, you know, I could stay all day and talk about it. And you guys know I probably will. So you can email me if you want, kcatert@usd497.org. But please, consider what these people are saying because their voices need to be heard much more in the way that we are making our decisions. Thank you.
Thanks. And the last person we have is Melissa Johnson.
My name is Melissa Johnson. I am a teacher in KCK. I taught here for two years in Lawrence. I have children. I actually have a senior who was the Youth of the Year in Lawrence and Kansas. I'm talk, I'm here to speak again on behalf of the way the special education program is ran. That same senior, that same Youth of the Year recipient, she was third grade, said, oh, her teachers had nothing but high things to speak of her, how highly intelligent, how she thought outside of the box, how she was creative. And low behold, they're like, okay, we're going to put her in student sit program, sit program. She was in there until eighth grade when guided studies came along, her peers that she worked with in enrichment, et cetera. When she went to the middle school level, they were like, where's she at? Where's Jasmine? And why is she here with us? She wasn't there. And it was excuse, well, she's not as organized as, you know, someone else. And statistics shows that some students who are gifted aren't as organized. And low behold, she qualified for gifted, but not until eighth grade because what if, what if, what if? I was told at KU that most students who fit this box of a single parent, low socioeconomic status and of color, that they show that they are highly successful and then they start breaking down at a certain grade level. Well, that's the box. She didn't fit in. My daughter, who's a freshman in LHS also, once again, showed highly motivated, straight A student. She thinks to Kel, they pushed and nudged. And of course, she missed out on all these opportunities that she could have had at the elementary level, at the high school level. Then we have my son. He qualified for special education under special needs. I was told initially that, oh, he's doing well academically. Why do we need to have him, you know, you know, he doesn't need assessments at this time. I said, well, I see things as a teacher, learning through KU, learning through my natural environment, that he had a special need. He was diagnosed to be on the spectrum. And he's had behavioral anxieties and things like that that kind of hindered. And they tend to look at that behavioral aspect of it. But still, knowing that he had a behavior aspect and he was, he was having complications and his learning wasn't differentiated, they still refused to get him tested, even though I saw it. I had to go outside of resources and pay out of my own pocket to prove that I knew that something was different with my child. And he's highly intelligent, but now we're focusing on the behavior and not the academics, which he probably won't qualify for dual exceptionality. So we need to do something about that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will say that while we can't have a back and forth at this point, we have been taking notes up here. And we also encourage you to keep the engagement going, making sure that we're moving forward on our equity work. So the next, next order of business is the consent agenda. The one board member has asked that we remove the board goals and just for discussion later in the meeting. So when we read the motion, we'll need to, that will be minus that item, okay? And do you, you don't have any retirements, do you, Shannon?
No retirements. I'll make the motion. I move the Board of Education adopt the items listed on the consent agenda with the exception of the Board, 2016, 2017 Board of Education Goals.
You have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chris. Janice? Yes?
Yes.
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 All right. Next item is the report to the President of the Board of Education. I had one brief thing I wanted to share. Friday, I and Jessica as well had the pleasure of participating in the district's first ever Future City Leadership Retreat for middle school students. It was held at the College and Career Center. For those who aren't aware of this project-based learning program, it's essentially focused on giving sixth, seventh, and eighth graders the opportunity to learn how they can make the world a better place through the sustainable design, construction, and operation of cities. Typically, they are school, excuse me, they work on it through the fall and then they participate in a regional competition in January. The winner of that moves on to the national competition later in the spring. And there's always a topic of focus each year. And this year's, it's the power of public spaces. And they have to make sure they address adding networks of public spaces within their future city that they create. This year, with South now also participating, is the first year that we have it at all four middle schools. And it was decided to help kick this year off by holding this leadership retreat for all middle school students doing Future City. Stacy Swerengen-White, who's the Chair of the KU's Urban Planning Department, provided the keynote address to all the students at South to kick things off that morning. Then they loaded them all on the bus and headed over to the College and Career Center for a series of six presentations and activities for the rest of their day. And Jessica provided one on adaptive leadership, and I won't steal her thunder if she wants to talk a little bit about it. Though I will say that my daughter, Amara, gave it a thumbs up. She thought it was really cool. And then I did one on the importance of taking all people's needs into account in designing our public spaces. And also threw in some elements of biofear and biomimicry. And then we ended with an evaluation exercise, so they got to assess a public space. And so it was a lot of fun, and I was really impressed at how well they got all, a lot of this already. And I think overall, the event was a success from what I heard. And the kids got a lot of good information and insights in general as well as for their Future City project. And I think it also really helped energize them and get things going for the year. And thanks to Danny Lot and Barker, the Southwest Gifted Ed teacher who was the primary organizer. And I want to thank Devin Heath, LM-CMS's Gifted Coordinator, who asked me to participate. And Patrick Kelly and other College and Career Center staff who kind of really helped pull this off. And I'm sure I'm leaving out others as well, but it was a great event. I hope it becomes an annual event as well. It was really cool. It was a great use of the College and Career Center, too. That's all I have. So Kyle, if you have the report?
So a number of things here to talk about. First of all, I received a lot of positive feedback from last Wednesday's Administrative Professional Development, which was extended to some of our school leadership teams. Thank you to Marcel and Vanessa for taking a little bit of time to peek in and see how that was going. Dr. Rosie Ward, he was the CEO of Salvio Partners, presented about what it takes to create a thriving workplace culture. And so it included some time with individual goal-setting for not only individuals, but also for teams within our building. So I left a copy, I believe, you've received a copy of the workbook, which is a lot of really good information that was shared. So we're excited about the possibilities of this. It's going to be ongoing professional development. It's gonna be ongoing professional development. It's also gonna be some collaboration within our buildings around this topic. I think it's gonna go a long way towards our goal, our board goals, related to improving school culture and climate, and just district culture and climate. So, it'll be a leadership focal point. At some point, maybe mid-year, we'll have a board report around our progress towards that goal, and a little bit more specifics about it. So, another thing I want to talk about interestingly, timely, I guess, so you know that Anna Stubblefield and Danika Moore are at the National Summit for Courageous Conversations About Race in Austin, Texas, presenting. We always take a number of staff from our schools, quite a few teachers and staff, and then also some administrative staff. And, you know, their presentation is about our recruitment and hiring processes, and what we've done in the last five years to improve that, and actually double the amount of staff of color we have in the district. And talk about also our professional development efforts with staff with Beyond Diversity, and how we've established a staff of color group, and their meetings, and what that's all about, and how we improve engagement with that. So, I want to share that. Congratulations to the honorees and families of the Liberty Memorial and Lawrence High Alumni, who are inducted into Lawrence Lions, excuse me, Alumni Association Hall of Honor yesterday. That included Lawrence Mayor Mike Amix, Selena Jackson, who is a Vice President at Procter and Gamble, and the late Dwayne Peasley, who was an active leader with the Local Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Union, and a champion for career and technical education. And the Peasley Tech Workforce Center is also named after him. There is a scarecrow auction Friday night from 5:00 to 8:00 at the Art Emergency Building on East Ninth Street. And the reason I'm telling you about that is our advanced culinary students will be there selling homemade tacos. So, if you're interested in that, all the proceeds do go to our school gardens program. Anyone interested in taking the GED practice test can take advantage of a 50% discount between now and October 31st. Please contact the Adult Ed Learning Center at Centennial for more information about that. One of our best-kept secrets is the Adult Education Learning Center. So, hopefully folks are tuned into that. Any teachers who are planning to retire this year, and who submit their retirement paperwork to Human Resources by Monday, receive a $500 one-time incentive payment approved by the Board to encourage the early notification process. We look forward to our second parade of schools coming up this Saturday. The public is invited to attend the open houses at seven of our elementary schools that are just completing construction. So, you can drop by any of those schools between 9:00 and 1:00. The schools are Broken Arrow, Deerfield, Kennedy, Prairie Park, Schwegler, Sunset Hill, and Woodlawn. And then, last but not least, Saturday afternoon from 1:00 to 3:00, following the parade of schools, we invite everyone to attend the grand reopening and rededication of the Ryan Gray Playground for all children at Hillcrest Elementary. We'll have a ribbon-cutting ceremony at 1:30, wheelchair basketball, a scavenger hunt, more snacks, and of course, everyone is invited to have fun on the new playground. And my kids have been asking me every day, when is the playground gonna be done? So, hopefully, we can get the sod down, and we'll be ready to roll. So, that's it.
Thanks, Kyle. Opened up for board commentary?
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I will say that the Future City Leadership Day was awesome. I had a great time, and I did get to teach about adaptive leadership. And I think one of the, the way they split us up is that they had these 120 kids in three different groups, and we went around teaching the same thing three times. And in every single room, what I was talking about was adaptive leadership, and particularly making sure you know yourself and your value systems and your beliefs. And so, they got to do a lot of really fun exercises and talk about themselves a lot. And in every single room, somebody said, well, I just have billions of awesome ideas all the time. And it was just so cool, because I was like, man, when do we lose that as adults? When do we stop believing that we have billions of awesome ideas all the time? Yeah, so, I think we do it to ourselves. But, anyway, so it was a really great time. I was really happy to be a part of it. But I also wanted to specifically address the group that's here today, talking to us, and say thank you all, and each and every single one of you for speaking. And I want you to keep speaking and keep coming here. A couple of you who got up, I feel, are actually personal friends of mine, so, you know, I know you, you worked for my mother. So, I just want to tell you that not only are we interested in hearing what you have to say, but we're really trying to hear it and to listen to it. I was contacted recently by a family who had experienced something unpleasant in one of our schools, and I brought it up with the superintendent, and it was very rapidly dealt with. And it might not be perfect, and we're gonna, only time will tell if that family and that student start feeling more comfortable. But we are trying to hear you, and we are trying to listen. And I do think there are some things that we can do quickly. And the notion that we have students that don't feel like they have a safe space to talk about what's happening in the news, I don't like hearing that at all. And so, certainly, I think that's something, we have equity teams in every single building, and if they're not providing that safe space for students, then that's something that they can start working on immediately tomorrow. So, do please keep coming. Don't let us off the hook for it, because I hear you, and I think everybody up here feels the same. We definitely do not want you to feel like you can't come speak with us and that we're not listening.
Any others?
I'm gonna change topics. I just wanted to say, I, along with several other board members, attended the Schools Foundation Breakfast a week ago, Friday, and just wanted to thank the community for coming out, supporting the Schools Foundation, so that they can support all the wonderful things that they support that help us do what we do, like the grant that we just received from them for the mobile hotspots. It was a big crowd. The speaker was great. She was inspiring and entertaining. And I love that her speech tied exactly into what we had heard about at a previous board meeting from Jared Kimball about yes and, and how, and how we can use that to move the conversation forward in our classroom, instead of saying yes but, yes and. So, thank you to all the community members who came out, and to the Schools Foundation. They did a great job.
Thanks, Ann. Anybody else? Okay. All right, so, let's move on to our first report. Update on personalized learning via blended format, personalized learning PowerPoint, with Angelique Nedved, Assistant Superintendent Teaching and Learning, and Terry McEwen, Director Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
Terry McEwen, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. I really wanted to say I'm the Director of the CIA, but I thought it was kind of fun on Presidential Debate Night. I wanted to kind of update you all on some requests that you made of us back in April, when we first presented this report to you. And you had some questions about data portrayal, et cetera, so I'm going to address those particular questions. But I wanted to take a quick journey back to the beginning of blended learning, personalized learning, and what actually inspired this. It really came from two questions that teachers asked us, and we asked the teachers. Can we increase student engagement? Would be the first question. The second was, can we provide a resource that maximizes teachers' time with students? And it's serendipitous of the community that was addressing you this evening, that that's kind of wrapped up in some of those things. So, we begin to answer the question by crafting an approach to instruction that would actually answer both of those questions. And our approach was unique. We were invitational in this approach to blended learning, personalized learning. Teachers were able to self-select when, what, and how much they wanted to try. We did not use the everybody-in approach that some of our school district friends that we've chatted with since in Indiana, in New York, and even Rhode Island used, where they would select a school and say, this school is going to be blended next year, everybody has to do this, and if you don't like this process, you can transfer to a different school, but everybody's in. We used the slower approach with deliberation, and we wanted to make sure that teachers felt comfortable, honored as professionals, and were able to self-select into the process when they were ready. We began this journey with some parameters, and we probably were perhaps overly tight in some of those parameters initially, where we were sort of directing what furniture should be in a room, what kind of devices, et cetera. And as we've taken the journey further, and as we are now in this year, four years later, we are really, have revised a lot of those parameters. We've loosened a lot of them. We're letting teachers kind of direct this process, as again, that they feel comfortable and that they want to encounter. The other piece was that we realized on our journey that we were professionally developing or having professional learning sessions set up for teachers that were completely contrary to what we were asking teachers to do with their students. So, we would tell students to, or we would tell our teachers to make sure that your students have choice and voice, and that they have the ability to select their pace and their place. And then we were telling teachers, sit down and learn this right now. And so, we began to change the parameters of our professional learning. And to that end, we are querying our teachers at the end of every professional learning session to determine what it was that they took away from that session, what would they like to see changed. And then the curriculum team, my awesome team of curriculum facilitators, sits down, ponders that data, and takes it very seriously, and then restructures PD based upon that feedback. So, I just bring that all up, because I think it is kind of nice to revisit the initial journey that we've taken along the way. The other way we answered the question was through surveys. So, we surveyed our teachers, and we have four years of teacher data. And while these are the same questions we portrayed to you in April, I'm presenting them differently to you tonight. The last time, I just aggregated the percentage of positive responses and gave you those numbers. I want you to see the whole array of responses. And so, tonight, you're going to see where we started in 2013, with eight teachers taking this journey, and then in 45 teachers the next year, to 150 in 2015, to last year, over 300 teachers. And so, you can begin to see how the responses change over time. While, yes, it is initially and overwhelmingly positive that indeed blended learning has increased student engagement, there are still pockets of where that may not be true. And that's where we begin to address those issues through professional learning, and find out why that may not be happening as well as it might in other places. The second question was, can we provide a resource that maximizes teachers' time with students? And the survey question is structured, blended learning provides me more time to work with individual students during class. Again, you can see overwhelmingly positive, but as time has gone by, and when we reached 2016, 300 responses are saying, yes, it does, in fact, provide them with more time to spend with individual students during class. Thus, the change in our direction to personalized learning, it's not just about blended, blending the best of traditional instruction with online instruction or digital resources, it's also making that teacher available to the individual student and addressing the individual student needs. So, what are our students saying? So, we asked this question, and we've asked it across time, and the reason that we don't have 2015 results, 2016 results, is because in the spring last year, we were asking so, we were having so many surveys about access, about devices, et cetera, that we felt that one more survey was a bit over the top. And so, we will come back this year with student responses, re-engaging them again, and with parents as well. But we felt that we had way overstayed our welcome with surveys, and we sort of backed away from this one. But you can again see that even when we increased the number of student responses from 220 in 2013 to 1,455 in 2015, the results remain pretty, pretty much static. I mean, they're pretty much gonna be the same kinds of things, which, interestingly, as, you know, we have students from all ends of the spectrum, they are answering honestly, is what I would take away from this. If this became like 100% positive, we would question whether they were really responding accurately or not. So, it has remained about the same, and again, overwhelmingly positive, and yet, there are places where students don't feel that this is true. And then the next question that addressed, is my teacher spending more time with me? And again, you can see across time that while remaining relatively stable, there are pockets of places where students do not feel that that is true. And I think that, again, these are places where we need to find out what we can do to be of assistance from the district level, and work with teachers, and work with students to find out why they might be responding that way. Next, we talked about, what are parents saying? So, this question, my son or daughter has expressed a positive attitude about their blended learning classroom, and again, remarkably similar responses across time. Even when we increase the number of respondents, we are remaining fairly stable in terms of how people are addressing this question. And then finally, as a parent, I see positive benefits to having blended learning in my son or daughter's classroom, and again, remarkably similar responses across the years, despite the increase in number. So, we will continue to do surveys, and we will continue to find out how students are feeling, how teachers are feeling, and how parents are feeling as we move forward. Remember the questions, though. The questions were about whether we could increase teacher time with students, and what was also, can we increase engagement? Not a very good answer to this question would be test results. In fact, that would be probably the least effective answer to this question. But, since we brought it up, I now have to, I'm gonna go back and show you how this really looks. So, I did, as you requested, and I separated the exact blended classrooms from non-blended classrooms. And what I provided was a mean, not a median, but a mean of the fall score on MAP, and then a mean of the spring score in MAP. And what you're going to see, and then I also, by the way, provided the national norm mean, so that you can kind of see how we look in the fall and the spring, in a blended, non-blended classroom, but also how any of our classrooms compare against the national norm. Significance, again, is established on these data at plus or minus three points, so anything less than three is considered to be not statistically significant. One thing that comes to mind for me is hooray, because what MAP is actually measuring is whether our students have been exposed to and instructed in the curriculum that lead to the outcomes expressed by the Common Core State Standards. And whether our students are in a blended classroom or not, they are getting to those outcomes. And so, that, to me, is a huge hooray. But again, the question was not about can we increase test scores, because to artificially inflate test scores would not necessarily be a good outcome for us, nor would it be an appropriate way to direct our teachers. Again, we're the ones that brought up the data, and so, I brought it back to you in this manner, to hopefully let you see more discreetly how, whether there are differences, and how those differences sort out. Finally, we need additional data. And as we've done this exercise, and I actually thank you guys for asking for the deeper data dive, because as I begin to ponder this, what research is really showing in terms of how do you measure student engagement? It is not on test scores, but it is on other attributes, more qualitative attributes, such as attendance rates, tardiness rates. Those kinds of things actually tell us much more than actual test scores. And by the way, teacher grade books tell us a lot more than standardized, nationalized test scores as well, because they're looking at the entirety of the student, the whole student, whereas a test score is only measuring specific abilities to answer specific questions. So, in our partnerships with the University of Kansas, we have begun to tease out how we're going to measure some of that qualitative data more effectively, and bring you a better longitudinal view. One of our positives to the approach we took to blended learning, which was letting teachers come in at the rate of speed that they felt comfortable, is that we do not have a well-constructed longitudinal dataset. So, that's the negative. I believe the positive of allowing our teachers the professional space to make their own choices outweighs that. choices outweighs that negative. So that's why we don't have really direct longitudinal data. But we're also going to be looking at resources to add to our current measurement system of student engagement. We were pointed to a, the board president pointed us to a Gallup place, Gallup survey today that actually does some really excellent questions that point to this very thing. And we're going to begin to look at that very carefully. The other, as I mentioned earlier, the practicing what we preach approach to professional learning. We've got to provide our teachers control over their path, pace, and place as well. When they're learning and they're in professional development sessions, they need to experience emotionally what we want our students to experience emotionally, and that is that self-control, that self-agency of how I can direct my own learning and own my own learning. We'll continue to gather immediate feedback from each professional learning session, and we will continue to respond to that data to revise those learnings for our teachers. Finally, we have a lot of great partnerships in this journey. We have a lot of partnerships with the University of Kansas, Dr. Kathleen Lane at the University of Kansas, and Dr. Wendy Oakes from Arizona State University through our CI3T partnership, through our IES grant partnership. Dr. Lane has a lot of research that suggests pretty strongly that engagement is a critical factor in reducing externalizing behaviors as well as some internalizing behaviors. Dr. James Basham at the University of Kansas has done a great deal of work internationally with personalized learning and the role of student self-regulation. And some of our work now is looking at how student agency actually creates that student ownership of learning and outcomes, and how that actually improves all the experience for a student and really personalizes that learning journey. Dr. Irma Hock and Dr. Michael Hock at the KU Center for Research on Learning have partnered with us to craft a personalized blended learning professional development program. And what this is focusing on then is teacher agency is a critical attribute of professional learning, so that when they have that voice and choice and control over path, place, and place, that their learning improves and that they feel that journey as well. So that is, that is our current status, and I look forward to bringing back some more of that qualitative data, because we really need to look at that to kind of begin to understand that student engagement piece, which I think extends out in so many directions in terms of our work with student social emotional welfare through that personalization of learning to develop that individual plan of study that the state board's goal is based upon. So I think we're very well poised through this journey to meet some of those state goals. Questions? Questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Okay, next we have the Health and Human Sexuality Curriculum in Partnership with Lawrence Douglas County Health Department, with Denise Johnson, Coordinator ESL Health and Wellness, and Michael Scholwaltzer, Specialist Health Promotion with the Lawrence Douglas County Health Department.
This is you. Do you want to get it on? Slideshow first.
You're so helpful. Thank you.
And ready?
Boom. And just with the clicker. Good evening, everyone. I'm Denise Johnson, and the ESL Health and Wellness Coordinator, and I'm here tonight to talk to you about the health and human sexuality standards that we adopted in 2013. I have a few wonderful guests to, that are joining me tonight, and I'd like for them to introduce themselves, and then each one of us has a small part in tonight's presentation to you.
Hi, I'm Mary Pat Pellet from Liberty Memorial Central Middle School. I'm here to represent the middle school teachers at the sixth grade level are.
Just your introduction now.
Oh, sorry.
I'm Sue McDaniel. I'm a nurse practitioner at the Lawrence Douglas County Health Department and a family planning STD program.
I'm Michael Scholwaltzer. I'm a health promotion specialist at the Lawrence Douglas County Health Department.
I'm Adam Green. I teach ninth grade health at Lawrence High School.
The standards, the standards were adopted by the school board in two thousand, May of 2013, and this guiding document provides the framework for the curriculum and lessons that we're going to be sharing with you tonight. This timeline that I, that you see in front of you provides a visual for the work that has been done and assists in the growth of the program. So you can see here that the standards were adopted, then we had a pilot program in thirteen, fourteen, through our sixth grade. Mary was in that pilot. In the summer of fourteen, we worked on the curriculum and with the aid of our partnership with our Lawrence community health organizations. And then in fourteen and fifteen, we actually brought the lessons into each one of the classrooms, K-12. Sixteen, we had a, the spring of sixteen, we brought in our special education leadership team and worked for modifications for lessons. And then this past summer, our health leadership team met to work on revisions and some next I'm going to talk to you tonight about the elementary portion of it. I did have two elementary teachers that were unable to join us. They had other obligations that happened kind of at the last minute. But I want to talk to you a little bit about the grade level PowerPoints. We created grade level PowerPoints for each one of kindergarten through fifth grade, and those PowerPoints are on SharePoint. It provides a guidance for our teachers, so they know the vocabulary, they were able to have the support of that particular PowerPoint that had all the information in it. We also then created letters and opt-outs, and all of those are on SharePoint for teachers, so they can go to the first grade letter, change their name, change the date, so then that provided the consistency for us. Each one of the grade level lessons vary. They vary from a video to class discussion, there are storybooks and sharing. And then what you see in front of you here is just the elementary K-2, some of the key concepts that are taught. And then also in three, five, again, you see some of the key concepts taught. I'd like to share that we've been keeping data on all of this, so each time the teachers at the end of the school year, whether they in the elementary, in the middle, health, or the high school, they send to me their opt-outs. And I've kept track of that over the last three years. We're working on our third year now. And with that, we have at the elementary, less than seven percent of our families choose to opt out. So I think, I think that's excellent to hear and that this is exactly what our families are looking for. And Mary will talk to you a little bit more about middle school and what the opt-out is for that as well. So this is Mary Pat Pellet from Liberty Memorial Central.
What I have found that once we start talking about human sexuality and we get all the giggles out, they really sit down and ask great questions. They really want to hear about it. As far as opt-outs, it's a very low percentage. I think this first nine weeks, I think maybe two or three in, at the sixth grade level. And it is required for all sixth graders to take healthy living. At the eighth grade level, career and life planning, the opt-out is a lot less. And we also, at the eighth grade level, we work with our, some community experts. We invite the Douglas County House Department to come in and the Willow Domestic Center to come in and provide lessons. And one other thing I just want to say is that under Denise's guidance, all the middle school teachers work really well together, and we develop lesson plans and so that we know that all students across the district are hearing the same information. Thank you.
Like Mary said, the minute you mention sex to a ninth grade student, you get immediate engagement. So that's not a problem. But you know, some, some things that, you know, I like to touch on just, you know, in going through teaching sex ed to freshmen is just, you know, just trying to make it a safe environment. You know, kids are really starting to kind of, kind of get their sexual feet right underneath them. And so the more you can do that at the ninth grade level, I think the better, the better off you are. And in that respect, you know, having our two guest speakers that we've had come in for about the last five years, I would say, has been really, I think, taken this subject in my class to a different level, you know? And so Vanessa, the world famous Vanessa Samberg is how I refer to her in my classroom. Having her and my wife, Cory Green, their, their, you know, their very, their level of expertise is amazing, and to see them kind of bring about what kind of climate they bring to my classes, just, it's really cool. And we're very, very lucky to have them doing what they do in the, in the ninth grade classroom. So, thank you.
I'm just going to kind of restate what Adam shared, and also two percent, we have less than two percent in our high school that, that opt out also. But it is the, from the support, we have wonderful health teachers and wonderful elementary teachers, but the support of our community health organizations in our city has really helped us move to a different level and providing that expertise and professionalism and assisting our teachers. I wanted to just share with you a little bit tonight, kind of some continuing improvement. We're beginning, like I said, our third year for implementation, and with all of these areas, we're just wanting to grow and in order to meet the needs of all of our students. Like I shared earlier, that we did have our special education team work and attend some training, so those modifications of those lessons will be happening this new school year. We have, in our elementaries, one of the areas that they found that was an issue is that we don't have online access for parents to view the videos. We're working on that this year, so that will be new. And in addition to that, our programming in our high school will continue to work with our community health partners to support the community, the communication, the curriculum, and the student growth. Tonight, we have two professionals from the Lawrence Douglas County Health Department here with us today. And Michael Scholwaltzer is the Health Promotion Specialist, and Sue McDaniel is an Advanced Practice Registered Nurse also at the Health Department, and they're going to share with you some research.
Thank you all again. First, I just want to say thank you to the board and to Denise for inviting us to come and speak today. As a community-focused public health department, we're always very encouraged to see the strides that members of our community are taking towards healthy and positive behaviors, particularly among youth. This board and the school district have done a phenomenal job, so we say thank you to you for that. Sue and I are here today to present on the evidence base for including condom availability as part of the school district's comprehensive sexuality education curriculum. So although that they've been widely utilized in other countries for decades, condom education and availability programs, known as CEAs, are quickly becoming a common component of comprehensive sexuality education here in the United States as well. When used consistently incorrectly, condoms and other sexual barriers can greatly reduce the risk of sexually transmitted diseases and pregnancy. And this is very important even in Kansas. As you can see on our slide here, according to the 2013 Youth Risk Behavior Survey, thirty-nine percent of high school students in Kansas reported ever having had sex, and twenty-eight percent of high school students were currently sexually active. Of those twenty-eight percent who were sexually active, over forty-three percent did not use a condom during their last sexual encounter. Sixty-seven percent of those students did not use any form of birth control, and nearly ninety percent of those students, eighty-eight point seven percent, did not use both a birth control option or a condom, or and a condom. There are many possible ways to account for the slow utilization of birth control and condoms, but one of the most persistent among youth is the perception among youth that there is low risk of pregnancy and low risk of STD transmission when having sex. And despite this perception, the CDC estimates that over half of the twenty million new sexually transmitted infections each year can be attributed to youth aged fifteen to twenty-four. That's ten million new cases every single year, despite those youth representing just a quarter of the sexually active population in the world. So this is one area where comprehensive sexuality education can play a very crucial role. Numerous studies have identified a link between school-based condom education programs and lower risk of sexually transmitted infection, delayed age at first sexual encounter, reduced number of sexual partners overall, and decreased likelihood to drink alcohol or use drugs before sex, and an increased likelihood to use condoms when having sex. Studies have also attributed low utilization of prevention methods to a number of other social and economic factors, which may come into play here in Lawrence as well. One study found that in addition to perceptions of safety, confidentiality, cost, lack of access, lack of transportation, and embarrassment were significant barriers to obtaining and using condoms properly. A subsequent survey among youth in Washington DC found that condoms were held behind the counter in eighty-three percent of all convenience stores, and only thirty-three percent of store has signs that clearly marked where condoms were located in their establishment. Additionally, adolescent women in particular were asked, when asked for help locating and or purchasing condoms, encountered resistance and even condemnation from store clerks twenty-seven percent of the time compared to ten percent from male teens. This is another area where schools with comprehensive sexuality education can help by making access to protection easier for students who are already choosing to have sex. Condom availability programs can significantly increase the number of sexually active students using condoms. And the study review by the World Health Organization found that access to contraceptives does not in any way encourage earlier or increased sexual activity. In fact, studies on condoms, education, and availability programs in New York and Massachusetts showed a reduction in the likelihood of students reporting both lifetime and recent sexual activity. At the same time, sexually active students in schools with condom availability programs were twice as likely to use a condom as sexually active students in schools without condom So in conclusion, I just want to say that the Health Department is committed to supporting the comprehensive sexuality education program that's already been adopted by the school district, including supporting youth to make the best decisions for their sexual health by making free access to condoms available to students in our high schools in Lawrence. And we're happy to answer any questions while we're here. Thank you again for having us.
Thank you. Any board members have questions?
I had a question for Denise about our data collection on our opt-outs. How far back, how long ago did we start collecting data, just when we started implementing the new standards?
Exactly. That's when I took the position, was in 2013, and when we began K-12, we began taking that data.
Thank you.
I just want to publicly thank all of you for the time tonight, and especially I want to thank Adam and Mary for coming, taking the day off, and working with these two professionals. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any, go ahead, Denise.
Well, I mean, I did have one, a couple of things I want to say. They aren't necessarily questions, but I do completely support the concept of open access condom availability to students for all the reasons you mentioned. Your data was fantastic, but I want to reiterate that having access to condoms does not increase sexual activity. All it does is increase the number of students who are using condoms when they're sexually active, which we know decreases negative risks associated with that activity. And I do think that open access, where students don't have to ask an adult in order to get them, is a much better strategy than having them in a locked drawer or somewhere where they have to like ask permission in order to take one, because I think that will improve use. And then I want to also say that in the lessons that I help provide in the health classes at both Free State and Lawrence High, this last semester, we surveyed freshmen about their thoughts about whether or not they wanted to have condoms available to them at school, and over ninety percent thought that it was a good idea. So I thought that was an additional data point that is important to know as we're contemplating this decision. Thank you.
Thanks.
And thank you, Adam. I should always have you do all of my introductions.
So essentially, we see this, the condom availability is really a natural extension, right? Next step, part of the sexual education program. So unless anybody does, has any objections, we're just, the plan is just to move forward. It's the next step, we're going to move forward. So we have agreement? Yes, all right.
And I appreciate the letter that went home to all of the parents of high school students. I thought that, that, you know, provided good information about our thoughts and was well received by the community.
All right, great. Okay, next we have the Okay, next we have the 2013 bond construction update with Tony Barron, Executive Director, Facilities and Operations.
Good evening. As Marcel stated, Tony Barron, Facilities and Operations. Just wanted to take a little time here to give you an update on our, coming close to the conclusion of our bond construction, our 2013 to 2017 is what I wrote up there. So a couple of things I just want to focus on here, just April of 2013, you guys, some of you passed the resolution to have this, which is really great, really hard to believe. We're talking about the next one already with the work session, but it is exciting at the same time. So we really have experienced a lot of fun and exciting things through this whole process. So this particular slide or this particular presentation today, I'm going to focus a little bit on the schools that we just finished up here in the, in the summer of 2016. Hard to believe we've gone through three summers of this. The first summer, we didn't know what we were doing. Second summer, there's way too many schools to do anything. And this third summer, we think we finally got it figured out. So obviously, there's always challenges, but we're getting better as we go. So I'll just continue to go through these slides here. First of all, I just want to kind of cover a few of the projects that we are, we do have complete. As you know, as construction goes on, I always try to express to the buildings, there's going to be a little bit of a, of a construction hangover, I guess, if you say, because it just, you don't always get it complete or functional when we get in, but there's always going to be things that are going to linger. Plus with anything with new design, you just never know how the space is going to work until students and teachers and staff actually get in it. So these are projects that we feel we have a pretty good rap on that have, some of them have been totally closed out, but as you know, we have warranty periods, we're still coming back and fixing things on. Bond projects through substantial completion, which I consider primarily done, but still kind of putting the finishing touches on. These, this particular six schools are the schools we focused on this summer. As you can see, we have five elementaries and Lawrence High. And so these are the six schools that I'm going to primarily focus on tonight. The next slide I have here, we have two projects remaining. We have Sunflower, which is still going right now. It'll be completed January 2017. And Pinkney will be completed in the summer of 2017. As of right now, as it stands, we primary, or at least through substantial completion, we have 19 of the 21 projects done. So we're very excited about that. The next slides I'm going to focus on, as I said, I'm just going to go through the schools and I'm going to show some pictures. I'm going to, I don't have a lot of data to share with you tonight, I have tons of slides. I just want you to see the spaces we've created. I'm going to stop and talk a little bit about the learning pockets, security entries, classroom renovations, our short throw projectors we've added. You'll see some really cool collaborative learning spaces. One statement that I remember, and Rick, I hope you don't mind me sharing this with you, we went on the tour and I remember walking into Deerfield and Rick asked me what the timeframe was for completion and I told him I think it was six weeks. And it just, that's the way they look, you know, when you walk in, you wonder, how in the heck are they going to get this done? And, and so it's always fun to see them come together, it's challenging, it's stressful for everybody, contractors, architects, engineers, teachers, building principals. So it's a stressful time, but we're fortunate to say that we've gotten into all of our buildings on time, 19, 19 through 21, and got two more to go, so. First picture I see, if you see here, this is Broken Arrow Elementary. One thing I want to focus on here on many of our projects, we've done some really cool graphics, just to kind of identify areas and going from one place to another. This is the commons slash learning pocket. As you can, this space right here, it was, I believe the school was built in the 60s and the, and the learning space still looked like it existed in the 60s. And so it was really a really easy facelift, I should say, for the actual, you can see the sound acoustic panels on the, on the, on the wall up there, you can see new carpet, new cubbies. It was a good coordination between our internal staff and our contractors to get all this to come together. And we've created a really nice learning pocket there and a lot of usable space. So this is kind of exciting. If you notice the one light fixture there that kind of sticks out on the right side, we put LED lighting in this also, which just helps to distribute the light a little bit better versus the old lighting that we had in there. This is another really neat space we have. We, as you know, if you don't know, Broken Arrow was kind of built like a bomb shelter so there wasn't a lot of windows in there. As you can see here, one of the things we tried to do is connect, this particular architect on this space has done this in a few gyms, trying to connect the activity space with the learning space. And so this particular picture right here, I'm standing in the commons area that I just showed you, and we actually have a visual to the gym, which never existed before. This used to be just a brick wall. So I'm going to show you this right here, you can see, and if you can see the little shadow of Mr. Brian McCaffrey right there, I'm going to, he's, he's standing and watching me and I'm going to take a picture from his view right there on the next slide and you'll kind of see the visual that you see, that we have here from the gym. So that's looking back up into where I was just taking the picture. So it's a really neat space. And one of the things we also wanted to do was add an accessible ramp. We, we kind of went back and forth. It, it cost a lot of money to add this accessible ramp, but we felt it was important. And one of the things I thought, okay, so, you know, are, is it going to get used? One of the great things that I saw the night that I was there for the open house was I actually saw somebody in a motorized wheelchair using that. If they wouldn't have had that in the school at that time, she would have had to go all the way around the school outside and into the cafeteria. So it was really nice that we had that connection. So it kind of made us feel really good about the decision to do that. And it was, it was good for me to see. I tried to get a picture of it, couldn't get my phone out fast enough, but it was, it was really a rewarding moment for, personally for myself. Right here is another picture of it. Accessible restrooms, another addition. We had really, really small restrooms in this area, so what we did is we totally renovated the center of this, of this space. And we built, actually built four restrooms, two men's, two women's, and so they're accessible. A very nice little wash bay right there that you see, so the teachers have good supervision of the students. Onto Deerfield, one thing we've done at all of our schools, every single school has, has, now has a secured entry, or will have a secured entry. Pinkney would be the last one. And so this is a picture of the Deerfield secured entry. This is what we call the drive-through window function. As you can tell, there's no way, oh, you can't really see from this picture, but there's no way to physically walk into the office, there's just a sliding window to the right side of this picture. Most of our elementary schools are like that. Our middle schools function a little different. We have the walk-in door to the office and the high schools also have the walk-through Office renovation, this is another collaborative effort with our contractors, architects, and our internal staff to, to renovate some spaces that we didn't originally have on the plan. Turned out to be really nice. The media library center was one of the main focuses for Deerfield here. This is as you're walking down the hallway, if you're, if you're heading, I believe you're heading south, this is as you first entered the space. So we got a really nice, kind of sectioned off enclosed area, but a really good view right here. The space turned out to be really nice, it was a really nice design. Great learning pocket right here, kind of, kind of a, some teaching stairs there the kids can sit on. If you look down past the picture there by the rock and chair is also just a nice small group collaborative space. Whiteboard paint on the walls right there for kids to, to be able to write on and share their thoughts. Another picture. The maker space is pretty important as we tried to do this in many of our libraries, just an additional space off the library area. We were able to accomplish in many of our elementary schools. Classroom, obviously. Kennedy Elementary, another example of the wall graphics that we used here. So this is, as you walk into the door, this is one of the first corners that you see when you come in the front entry. Early childhood classroom, this is with the main focus for the construction here at this school. Have some very nice early childhood classrooms and some very nice space for those kids to work in. A great renovation. Learning pockets slash storage area, I guess you could call it. So one thing the early childhood has, just tons of, of items to store. As you can see there, there's plenty of cabinets there, this is kind of an area that they share. This is kind of a pass between two classrooms, so this is located between two classrooms. So both, both classrooms can use this space, whether it be collaboratively or separately. The large group collaborative space, this would be the former outdoor courtyard. So this space turned out to be really nice. So as you can see, the, the architecture in there is really neat, the finished product turned out to be really nice. Another space in the same area. If you are sitting on the stairs, there's a, the wall in front of that space is one giant whiteboard, it's a painted whiteboard wall. Another small learning pocket in the same area. Prairie Park, this is a secured entry, another point of our projects. As you can see, we really dressed up the space, put walk-off carpet in, changed out both doors, we had metal doors, we went to aluminum storefronts on these. Office renovation. And the learning pocket here, we did absolutely nothing in this except paint and carpet. So this really was such a great spruce up for us, it was such a simple, a simple thing to do. And that's one thing, when I talked about the capital project, these are, these are items that we can do from our capital improvement project to help in some other elementary schools that didn't quite get the facelifts that some of these schools did. So this, this is something that you'll see coming your way, capital improvement wise as far as carpet and paint. We've learned that we can't do carpet without paint, so, and vice versa. It just doesn't go well. One of them ends up being really ugly, the one that we didn't do. So we've kind of learned that they kind of goes hand in hand. And this is probably exciting to no one but me. So as you can see, we got a great washroom basin here, epoxy 48 inches up, perfect for our custodial staff. And this is kind of a big deal in Prairie Park because David Williams came to us and he was talking about these urinals. The urinals were too high for the kids, so it never was in the scope to do anything with them, but they couldn't use them. He said they could use them, but you know what happens. I mean, they, they, it just wasn't quite right. So we went in and totally renovated the restrooms for him, which turned out to be, they were, they talk about something that somebody would be happy about. He, those teachers were coming to me and the, and the gym teacher, hey, thanks for renovating the bathrooms, thanks for lowering the urinal height. So it was really kind of exciting. Plus, our custodians love it too because it just, like I said, gets them something that's right. It's cleaner, plus the epoxy all the way up the wall is just a great way for us. That, that's how we clean. We, we do touchless cleaning with a, with a Kaivac machine that sprays the restrooms down. So having that epoxy 48 inches up or higher is just a benefit to our custodial staff. Schwegler Elementary, another secured entry. The office renovation again. This is a classroom turned into a learning pocket here. This is kind of really, I like the way they did the, the color squares there with the carpet. As you can see, the soft flexible furniture. And then if you see that, that board that's, that's perpendicular to the wall, actually has a wheel on it. So you can roll that board, it has a hinge, you can roll that, fold it up against the wall and have a large group, or you can pull it out and have a separate learning spaces, which is a really good, a really nice flexible idea. Outdoor courtyard with artificial turf, man, this is nice. We talked about this when we first started with this space. I, I have some personal experience in this space. So this is really cool. My kids have gone to school here and we were always working on that courtyard. It never failed. There was no way to get in and out, there's no way to take branches. There was, I think, about five trees in there, there was bushes, and every time we had a workday, the place was just kind of, it needed a lot of work. So we, we had to actually pull all that stuff through the school to get it out. And so when we got to remodeling it, I kind of asked the architects to look at something that's kind of neat and out there. And so we looked at the artificial turf and some, and some rock. And so it turned out to be a really nice space. It looks very comfy and walking on it, it feels good. So hopefully, teachers, kids can use this as a, as a nice space for them to learn. Where I'm standing right now, taking the picture, is right outside one of the teachers' workrooms. So if they would want to step outside and eat their lunch right there on the bench, that's also an option for them to do. So really excited. Plus, we put some dirt areas in there for gardens. So that's where the, they'll have their school gardens is inside the courtyard. It just seemed like the right space to do it. So we went ahead and incorporated some of those areas here.
Do they have to vacuum that, or how does that clean up?
That's a great, that's a good question. So yes, you are correct. We do not have to attend to it like we do our sports fields, but we still have to attend to it. Probably more like a blower, about blowing the leaves to the corner and just picking up the leaves is probably more like it. Maybe once a year vacuuming it, but it's a pretty easy care, it's pretty easy to take care of, so.
Sadly, I have some artificial turf on the inside, so I've, I know how hard those are to vacuum.
Right, yeah, it is. And we'll, we'll definitely do our best to keep it clean and hopefully the gardens don't, the gardens are the only areas there that we have the soil, so hopefully we can keep that separate. We'll end up putting some borders up in there, so hopefully it doesn't spread. Lawrence High School, Black Box Theater in front entry, one of our main, excuse me, cafeteria addition, were one of our main renovations here. If you look here, this is, this is the Black Box Theater as it exists. Front entry turned out to be really nice. I had a picture of the old front entry that I thought about throwing in here, but I, I didn't. But this, this really turned out to be a pretty neat, I, I think it looks very nice. Secured entry. And then the cafeteria expansion, if you look here, we expanded the cafeteria, I'm thinking, I'm trying to estimate in my head, I think we probably went out about 15 feet. And it's made the world of difference. It's amazing what the feedback we've heard from the administrators is that much more room has provide, I mean, that much more additional footage, square footage has added a lot of space for kids to go. And if you see, we just completed that, it's basically a bar against the wall all the way along the window there, which is going to be really beneficial, add a lot more seating, especially for those kids. We talk about kids who want to be in isolation or kind of be by themselves and not really have a place to go in a cafeteria, and this might be an option that they, they can use. Alright. Of course, there's strengths and challenges with everything that we do, and I thought I'd just list a few of these here for you. One of the first ones I want to talk about is we tried to do, we tried to be very intentional about going out to the schools and talking about the packing and the moving and how that's going to affect them. And I, I feel like we were well received from the teachers and staff. Of course, there's information that you give them that they don't want to hear. You can't be in your building from May 27th to August 13th. There's some teachers, they just, they love to be in their building in the summer. And so there was a couple of things we had to talk through, and they were very supportive of us. So we appreciate, we appreciate them understanding where we were, building admin and, and their teaching staff and preparing for us. It was great. We were walking into these spaces on Thursday afternoon and sometimes, we were asking them, hey, can we come on over, we're ahead of schedule? Yeah, come on over. And, and they were ready for us. They were asking us to go ahead and get their stuff out of the rooms, which just did nothing but put us ahead of schedule. So they were very cooperative and very easy and good to work with. Architect, excuse me, internal staff, our internal classified staff, their willingness to take on additional responsibilities. Our FNO staff, our, our purchasing, our printing staff, our, our, some of our TNL staff, our, our IT staff, there's tons of people who really stepped up to the plate when it come to wrapping things up, getting them ready to pack, and then the big rush also coming back into the buildings. And that was, that was very challenging, but they stepped up to the plate and did a good job. Architects and contractors, I can't say enough about our relationships with them. It's kind of like, I didn't know when I stepped in here three years ago, it was going to be like a three-year marriage. You got good, you got bad, and a little bit of everything, but honesty, and we talked through things and we got to where we needed to be. Had some very tough meetings, had some good conversations, but it really worked out well. We, we've developed some very strong relationships with, with owner, with architects and contractors and engineers. So we met twice a month. So unfortunately, it's coming, it's coming to an end here pretty soon. We won't get to see them every, every two, twice a month, so that's kind of the way it goes. And I know McCown Gordon was one of our contractors, Napolos was one of our, I see him at risks. Sabatini was on this project along with Hollis and Miller. We also had BG Architects and, so they were, they were all good to work with on this, this particular, these particular projects. Communication collaboration among district level departments, we had a committee that met that had a representative or two from all of our district level departments, and that just kind of helped us understand what, what I was doing that was going to affect somebody else and vice versa. And also a very good perspective on things when we think that we are going to go out and do something that makes sense to us and somebody from teaching and learning who's been in the classroom says, are you crazy? Are you really going to do that? And so that's really, was really good feedback that we had, and I thought it was a good representative of, of people in, in operations versus people who have actually been in the classroom. So I felt really good about that committee. Still meeting, actually. Challenges. Communication with buildings regarding the completion of projects. As we come, August 13th came and it was just a flurry as it was every summer. And trying to get good, solid, up-to-date communication to our buildings was just, it was tough. We don't always have the, we're, we're busy trying to get school going, teachers and students are back, so we, we've, we just felt like that was a challenge for us. And I know building administrators would want, want more information than we had to offer. Timely completion of unfinished tasks, that's just trying to get things wrapped up. We always say we're going to be safe and functional when we move in. It may not be data porch work and some electrical outlets may not be working correctly, just little things that, that we don't know, aren't working until we actually get in the space. Excessive assignments for internal staff and that, we stretched our staff then, I said it earlier, they're willing to step up to the plate, but we really put a lot of pressure on them. And, and I, hopefully we found that balance that we didn't wear them out too much, but they, they did a lot of extra work. And supporting our yearly back-to-school deliveries, work orders with our final construction needs, and that's more outside of construction. Every year, we have stuff that we have to get back in the buildings, teaching materials and other items, so just trying to find that balance of, and prioritizing, because it's all a priority, so just trying to make it, make it happen was a challenge for us also. So that's kind of it. You may have heard other strengths or challenges that, that have taken place, you know, we'd be more than welcome to hear about them. We really feel like we're in a good place, we're still wrapping projects up, I think they look very nice. I'm extremely excited about them. Always good to come to closure at some point, and excited to move on from the beginning at this particular one, so we can kind of guide and go, and we learned a lot, there's things we do differently, there's things that we feel like we did well. So just, any questions from any of you?
Anybody have any questions?
Appreciate your support.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Okay, the last item, we need to discuss the 2016-2017 Board of Education Goals. So Rick, you have something you want to?
Yeah, I mean, I asked for that to be removed, they didn't come out until noon today, I haven't had a chance to read them, and so I think we should delay action on them until we've all had an opportunity, and maybe I'm the only one who didn't get the chance to do so. And as a general rule of thumb, I think we need more advanced notice. So that's, that's the reason that I asked for that to be removed. May also be the case that we have something that we're doing already in terms of trying to increase the diversity of our staff, that would be kind of easy to put on the goals and make it quite explicit. So I, I'd like to delay the vote on that.
Okay, so I think, I think we can do that, and move it to next week?
Two weeks.
Or I mean, next meeting, two weeks.
Next meeting.
Yes.
Thanks.
So a couple of things, I guess. So on the hiring piece, I was going to speak to that anyway, so that was on the board goal several years ago. That's one of the things that's a continued focus. We've taken things off after we've had them kind of institutionalized, are we saying we want to put that back in?
I think it would be a good idea.
I think it's institutionalized personally. I think that we know, you know, we've had several meetings that we've heard about all of the processes that are going on and continue to go on about our continued attempt at hiring of staff of color.
At the same time, I think that our board goals are a marketing document for the community to see what we're about and what we're doing, and I think in that respect, I mean, I think that's what the public is kind of looking at, to say, what are our priorities, what are we doing? And we're doing that, and I think highlighting that and saying that's a focus is certainly worthwhile.
Another possibility would be to simply communicate more effectively, maybe with a separate report specifically on what we're doing across the board with diversity. I mean, there's just no, there's just no denying this is a huge issue, it's not going away, it shouldn't go away, and so I think articulating what we have done, what our, what, what our next steps are, what we think we can accomplish in a certain timeline, you know, and a place maybe for people to give feedback. What I don't want to see us is as, is seen as just another sort of institution that is not communicating about these things. And so anything that we can do, I mean, I don't know that we need to put explicitly on our board, board goals about hiring, but maybe we can add something there about how we're communicating what we are doing better, but that maybe a goal could be that we're going to, we're going to come up with a way that that information is readily available, and that there's some sense of a place you can go for, for questions about that type of thing. Because I mean, what we have heard, and I, you know, we've heard it not just tonight, but before that, is that people are not, they don't know where to, who to talk to. And it's not because we don't have people in place.
We have several, I just, I just say, I know we have several communication goals, do we have anything right now that addresses that? I mean, if we, if we don't, then I, I think I would agree with, with Jessica, as in making that a focus. And I, and I don't, I think for me, since, I mean, this is a, it's a goal document, so if, if it's, if it's already institutionalized, I don't know why we put it on there, unless there's something else that we need to do to address, to, to improve that, what we're already doing. That would, for me, then that would be a goal, otherwise, I mean, it's a, you know, I think the communication part may be more important.
I agree with that, yeah.
That's what I was going to say, I, I think I would go more toward what Jessica suggested, what you've just suggested, because there, it's important that we acknowledge what we're doing and that, and that we've tried and we had institutionalize it in a lot of ways, but making sure that the public knows about that. I would hesitate to start putting things back into the goal document that we've done that with, because there's this issue, which is obviously very important, there's a whole lot of other things that we've institutionalized over the years, and people may have questions about that, we, you know, trying to preserve kind of the, the purpose that we have for this particular document. So I really like Jessica's suggestion and.
Well, there's, yeah, there's a lot we can share. I mean, so our district equity leadership team could give a report monthly, honest, really honestly, I mean, because we, some really good information, like equity audits that our buildings do every single year, that talk about student participation and things, you know, what our efforts are to put, you know, students of color and get them in advanced placement courses, looking at our special education numbers and, you know, how we're identifying students and, or over identifying students, so lots of things that we would be more than happy to brag about.
Yeah, I think that's good. And then, and do we have a clear point of contact for our equity work from the, for the, from the community standpoint? If there's some, a parent or somebody?
Didn't you come more?
Yeah, and so I think making that clear.
And yeah, lots of information on the website regarding, or if you click on equity.
I guess if I can just say something else, kind of speaking to what I've sort of briefly mentioned about the family coming to us this, this last week, one of the main messages that we heard, and again, Kyle was incredibly receptive and dealt with it very swiftly, but is that our families of color don't feel safe coming to the administrators in the buildings or to the district, and so somehow we have got to figure out how we can approach that and deal with that. And it, it might be a slow process, but we can't have families feeling like they can't go talk to principals or can't come and talk to the district office. I mean, we've got to figure that out, and it's got to be a focus.
So that's one of our goals, actually, under equity, goal 3.4, develop a plan to consistently engage communities of color in authentic, meaningful, and purposeful ways through pass. So.
I have one other suggestion, and that is, you know, I think we are currently doing and goal, the CI3T goal number three, we are doing a complete external review of district special education services. Is there an equity lens on that? I mean, I know we generally put an equity lens on everything, but is there one on that particular goal, and if there is, can we put that in there?
Yes, certainly. Yeah, we, yeah, yes.
Kyle, is there, is there any disadvantage internally to us putting off that decision on officially approving this for, to our next meeting? It doesn't, there's no negative consequence to that, right?
We never stop. So, yeah, we're going, whether it's a formal board approval or not, because there's so many things that we just keep working on constantly, so yeah.
We can put it back on the consent agenda?
Well, but if, if there's going to be edits, if we can get it sooner, then, yes, maybe, but not if it's necessarily, so quickly.
If we can get it by early next week, the latest, is that adequate time, and then we could have fun? Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
I was just going to ask that, all right? One second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned.
Okay, so because I love you people, I want to be out here, I'm a little concerned that if you have on your board goals, like we're just talking about.